All right.
We're ready. So, so we are in session. We opened the meeting of the Cohasset Select Board earlier this evening and went into executive session. So we've done our roll call. I'm just going to read some of the the setting of the stage. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and on Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is also invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Please note that comments on the Facebook platform are not monitored. Members of the board or other scheduled participants will be asked to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at the meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions during public comment or at the discretion of the chair are asked to utilize the question and answer feature on Zoom, including typing in their name and address for the public record. The chair and vice chair will review the questions and direct them to the appropriate participant for a response. This meeting is also being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. And I invite anybody who would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Jack has the flag right over his shoulders.
The pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Republic.
Which stands
Which stands
Nation
Nation
Under God. Invisible
Invisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first, the first order of business is any public comment for items not on the agenda. I know that we have, somebody reached out to me ahead of time. If Peter's, Peter Pescator is in the gallery, could we promote him? Can anybody see?
He's coming up. He should be there in a second.
Great.
Diane, while we're waiting for that, we have one question from Sean Galvin of 143 Fort Hill Street in Hingham, asking if Cohasset will go forward with trick or treating on Halloween.
Oh, that's something that we can just, just put on a separate agenda since that's nothing we can answer tonight, but that is an interesting question that we probably should discuss in, at our first meeting in October. Great. And Peter, you're next up on our public comment. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening to all. Thanks for giving me a moment to speak. This weekend, we had a great turnout for National Cleanup Day. It's, it's international as well as national. We had groups, we had the Rotary, we had the Second Parish Youth Group with Pastor Karen, we had the Brownies, we had families, we had individuals working all over town, picking up litter. One group had 13 bags, the Rotary Group working along North Main Street did a fantastic job. The youth group working up around the Sailing Club and the Lightkeeper's House had four or five bags of trash that they picked up, plus an old chair and all kinds of stuff. So it was a great success. All volunteers, all taking their own initiative to go out and, and clean up. The Brownies cleaned up Willwright Park, made it spotless. I arrived with my dogs to, with my bag gloves and dogs to walk through Willwright and clean it up, and it was spotless. So they beat me to it. The other thing I want to, and Chris was probably going to announce this as well, but we got, yesterday I got notice from the planning director that the state has finally approved. We have final approval for the Open Space and Recreation Plan, which runs from 2018 to 2025. So we're delighted after a very long gestation period to finally have final approval of the Open Space Plan. And with that, I thank you for giving me time and I hope you have a good night.
Great. Congratulations. Thanks for sharing that good news.
Excellent job.
Yeah, that's great.
Lady, any, nobody else in the peanut gallery for tonight? Thank you. So we'll move on to the community update. And there's been lots going on, as there always is. Who's going first, Chief?
Good, good evening, Madam Chairperson and good evening, members of the board. Yeah, very quickly, we're going to do a quick update on what's going on. And I'm going to do my quick PSA before we do. And my PSA is very, very simple. And it is that the fall weather has officially arrived, as we've all noticed, and we're slowly but surely all moving back indoors. As we move back indoors and we become closer and more in contact with each other, I just want to do the quick reminder that there are four things that we can all do that will help with the, the virus as it, as we progress through the fall and the winter. And the first is obviously wear your face covering slash mask, number one. Number two, wash your hands. Do those things. Number three, try and keep socially distanced from people. Six feet is the number that they kept throwing out at us. As the governor likes to say, his problem right now is people that are familiar with each other being too familiar with each other. So remember the six foot distance. And then lastly, if, and you don't feel well for any reason, please stay home. And if you have the symptoms of coronavirus, go and get tested. And the, the isolation and the quarantine protocols are all over the place. I think we've seen them. They're on our website. They're on the state website. They're on, they're on every website, every website you can find. So the bottom line is those are the things that we can do. And with that, that's the end of my PSA. I'll get off my sofa.
I actually, I actually do have an order. So I believe Miriam is up next to tell us, talk to us about the town hall reopening.
There you go.
Good evening. Thank you. We have officially opened town hall as of yesterday. We have put together a protocol that we believe keeps both staff and visitors safe. We have set it up so that all visitors come into town hall in the front of the building. We are highly recommending appointments for business so that there's minimum waiting. But the town hall is not set up so that people can line up at departments and be socially distant. So we have narrow hallways in some cases. So people who do not have appointments can be seen, but they may have to wait until someone is available or will help them actually book an appointment. We put together a video of that, which is on our website. I don't know, and I know it's already been distributed to many people. And so it's a very quick video that shows basically the process of coming into town hall and how you'll be greeted and what you'll be asked to do. Everyone coming into town hall must wear a face mask. And if for some reason you're unable or medically unable to wear a face mask, we will service you in a different way. Virtually in some, in some sort. So we'll work with people to do that. We've gone out to staff and we've asked them how it's going. We've tweaked the process a little bit where we had things that didn't feel right or didn't move as smoothly as possible. And everybody seems to be okay with the process. Of course, with the election coming, we have, you know, lots of people who are coming for ballots and, and information and we're working on a way to provide that without having everybody come in and ask a question in person. So we're open. It's going well. And I guess that that's about it. Did you want me to show the video to the public at this point?
If it's easy to tee it up?
Let's, let's give it a try.
How long is it?
It's like a minute.
Like a minute. Can you do it, Chris?
We are getting so savvy. Hi Jen.
The soundtrack is, was not really great then, but if you go to the website, the soundtrack is much better. So Diane, you're still muted.
I think I just breathe on it and I'm going to sit on my hands. Just a question that I know somebody typed in, but I was going to ask it anyway, which is I have had a lot of people ask about the library. My answer has been it's, it's a place where people gather and spend time and that's, that is exactly what we're trying to avoid. And that all their other functions are, are, are ongoing. But if you could kind of confirm that, that that's my understanding?
I can confirm that. So we have virtual programming going on. We have curbside delivery. We have Wi-Fi in the parking lot, but we are not open to the public as of yet. And there is not a date set for that yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carrie?
Yeah, there is really good Wi-Fi in the library parking lot, too. If anyone needs to go sit and do something in their car, it does work really well. You never know when you're going to need to escape. But also, Miriam, quick question for you. In terms of people calling to make appointments, do you prefer that to just be calling the main town hall number? Or is there an easier electronic way to make appointments? Or what would you prefer?
The easiest and most preferred way is on our website, you can actually click a link and fill out a form for an appointment. And then we'll confirm that with you. However, for people who are not internet savvy, they can always call the department that they wish to see and make an appointment.
Thank you. Unless, Paul?
Do the employees have the option of wearing a full face shield? Like a plastic shield? Because we're using that in the hospital, starting about maybe eight weeks ago for protection of the eyes.
We have not had anyone ask for one, nor have we required them to do that.
Okay. It just, if they're going to be inside for a good length of time, serving the public, one thing you might consider.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
We do have them available if, if any of the members of the staff want them.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to keep us moving. Next up is Chief Quigley, who's going to update us on a few things.
Hey folks, how you doing? Good evening. And today was the first day of school. So this, they've divided, you know, the classes, divided the school population into two groups. So the first group went today, the next group will go on Thursday. So we'll have day one all over again on Thursday. So effort to streamline that, we've, we've cleared the construction off of Sawyer Street for the week. They're not going to be working up there. We just, you know, we're trying to ensure the smooth, smooth flow of traffic. And it worked out okay today. A lot of volumes, just, you know, we're trying to put a lot of people into a small place. So it's a volume issue as opposed to, you know, it's not really the flow. We're doing the best we can with what we have. The, you know, buses, no, no issues with the buses and everything, you know, from, from our view, everything went pretty smoothly. You know, and it was, you know, as quick as we expected. That's really all I have. You know, with, with the schools and everything else, I think it's been covered. So in effort to not take up too much time, I'll, I'll throw it back to you.
Great. Thank you. Next on my list is Pam.
There we go.
There you go.
Chris, did you get a, a slide too about the flu clinic for me? While he looks for that, somebody brought up Halloween. I just want to tell you guys also that the Department of Public Health from the state that comes up with all the guidance for all the different business sectors like retail, restaurants, recreation, they're also going to come up with guidance for Halloween. There's been a lot of call for that, as you can imagine, from all the different towns around the state. So we're expecting next week to get something about what is and is not allowed for Halloween. We do know already that they're not going to allow haunted houses, like, you know, that Barrett's Haunted House or the Haunted Ship in Quincy. Unfortunately, see you in 2021 for that stuff, but um, hopefully they'll have trick or treating. We'll see. And maybe just some modifications or something.
Great, thank you.
But I did want to talk about the flu clinic. If you could just go to the next slide, please, Chris. So we are going to have a town, town flu clinics, plural. Mary Goodwin is the public health nurse and she will be running these. The first two are actually drive-through clinics on October 21st and the 28th. Those are Wednesdays from 10:00 in the morning till noon. They're both going to be held at the Osgood School. And then there will be one in-person clinic on November 14th from 10:00 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon. And that's going to be at the Dare Hill School. So a few things to remember for each of these clinics, you do need to wear a mask, even if you're in your car, you still need to wear a mask. And if you come in your car, you can have more than one family member. You could have somebody in each seat, but you just have to, you know, call ahead. So there is also a limited supply of the high dose vaccine, which is what is given to people 65 and older. So make sure that you do sign up as soon as you can. All these vaccines will be covered by insurance. So it's just important to schedule your appointment. You can either email marygoodwin@mgoodwin@cohassetma.org or you can call Mary at the town hall number. Her extension is 5130. And that's it.
Great, thank you. I actually have a question for you, Dr. Schubert, and then I'll let you ask your question. And my question is just in terms of timing for flu shots. I mean, is there, you know, is it better to get it today instead of October 28th or?
Yeah, get it as soon as possible. It will cover you for the entire season. And remember that as flu season wanes, it's basically going to be six months. It's going to be from November until May at the latest. We saw an early drop in flu numbers. Once we did the lockdown in March and April across the country, we saw numbers drop dramatically. I suspect that's a combination of social distancing, masking, and prevention of spread through schools. So now is, now is the time to get it. Yes. This is
Did you have a question?
Yeah. Yeah. This is extremely important for two reasons. Flu itself is, is a deadly disease. It, it's going to kill 30,000 to 80,000 per year, depending on how bad the flu season is. We may get a light flu season this year if everyone is careful, cautious, masking, and getting their flu vaccines. The other most important thing is the combination of flu infection with a COVID coronavirus infection has an extremely high baseline mortality. We saw this in the Italian studies, Germany and Spain. So that will also lower the overall mortality of a coronavirus infection. The other thing which it will do, it will lower the overall demand on the hospitals with numbers of flu infections and hospitalizations. We will start to see the second wave and we're seeing it a little bit now. We've, we're behind Europe by probably four weeks. So Europe is beginning to see it now. We're going to see it. The question is how big, how high, and what the demand on the, the hospital EMTs, police, fire are going to be. So this is a key thing. Running into the fall to get, that's all.
And if you get shut out of Cohasset, our, our clinics is also CVS, Walgreens, Stop and Shop. I think originally they were all supposed to be walk-in, but I think people have been doing it so much, there is such a high demand that you should call ahead and just make sure you can get an appointment.
Great, thank you. Chief, did you want to say something? Chief Sylvia?
Nope, Pam covered it. Thank you.
All righty. Any, anybody else? Okay, great. Thank you all again for all you're doing and, and giving us updates as best we can and as we all navigate these crazy unknown waters. Glenn, are things slowing down for you a bit?
Now that we got schools open, I think this week will be a little less of a hectic pace, but we spent a lot of time coordinating with them last week. We delivered just a little over 14,000 individual pieces of personal protective equipment to the schools. And now we'll see what the burn rate is, if they have it. We, we found a new home temporarily for the buses at the Little League Field, so that was a big plus. And so, yeah, we think everything is going well.
Great. Fingers crossed. Good. Thank you. Any other questions from Select Board? We're good? All right. Thank you. We're going to move on to committee and board appointments. The first two, I, I don't believe they're in our waiting room because they're, their committee recommended appointments for two different master plan implementation committees. So the first is Peter Hobson, who has been he's a, this is for the Master Plan Implementation Committee seat on the Affordable Housing Steering Committee. If anybody has any questions, otherwise I'll take a motion.
I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Great. Peter's officially on the Affordable Housing Steering Committee as a Master Plan Implementation Committee representative. And then similarly, we have the Cohasset Historical Commission has recommended Julia Gleason to a position on the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Is there a motion?
I move the point.
Go ahead.
I move that we appoint Julia Gleason to the MPIC Cohasset Historical Commission.
How about a second, Jack?
Second, because Julia, one of her older relatives, I used to work with him in Boston. He was general counsel to the mayor many years ago. So we, we worked with him, so I'm glad to second it.
Glad to be on board. That's terrific. Okay, roll call, please.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Great. Okay, thank you. Welcome to Julia. And then last evening, we interviewed three, three terrific candidates for the two positions on the Conservation Commission as associate members. These are one-year appointments. Chair of the Conservation Commission, Jay Pimpari, was with us as well to kind of talk about the needs for CONCOM and, and the role of, of not only the commission, but also these two associate members for one year. So you know, I, I think we have, we're very fortunate that we have great candidates. There's, there are other positions left in town. I'm just going to tee this conversation up. There's a position on the Design Review Board, which is a TRICA appointment that will be upcoming. And we also have nine seats on the School Facilities Committee, which is a very important role that we need to, or committee that we need to get moving on. So, you know, whoever isn't chosen, we're going to talk to them hopefully about getting them engaged in another way. So I'll open it up for anybody from the board that has some thoughts on our interviews from last night. Corey?
Yeah, I'll start off. I mean, you know, I took a really hard look at, at, you know, COMCOM and these three applicants. And, you know, we kind of have boards that are review boards and we have boards that are, I don't want to be pejorative here, but like are doing boards, boards that, you know, make processes happen versus boards that need to take in input and then make, make a decision. Understanding that, you know, what I think, my personal view is I would recommend appointing Heather Sykes and Tom Bell. And then for Mr. William Ashton, I'd love to get him on a board that's more of a doing board. His background is very much in construction, managing projects, and that, his skills are going to be very, very useful, if he's willing, of course. You know, to be involved in some of the projects that we need, that kind of, the, the vision of how do you structure, how do you organize, how do you get people together, how do you move stuff forward? So that's just my first, first pass on this.
Yeah, that's, that's good. I, I mean, I think Will and Heather, both in particular, had, had professional roles where they were in front of hearing boards, which, which is good. But again, I mean, they're, they're all terrific. And, and as you well know, Corey, I believe there's still positions on cable advisory, right? Yes. So a doing board, a very, very much doing board. Anybody else? Jack?
Yeah, um, you know, as a former chair of conservation and long-serving member, you know, I looked at very, very carefully. It's, all of them are more than qualified. We should be grateful and we should be grateful they've stepped forward. However, I do think that Tom Bell and Heather Sykes are probably more suited for what is after all a the Conservation Commission is a regulatory body. And so a little bit, you know, different. And from our questions last night, it appeared to me that they both understand that. And I think that Will did so as well. But I'm looking at Will and I'm seeing there's other places that I'd like to see him plugged into. So I think I would say that Heather Sykes and Tom Bell would certainly get my vote.
Anybody else? Paul?
Yeah, I tend to agree. I mean, it's one of the few times where there are three extremely qualified candidates for two positions. Half the time in town, we're usually shy of a position to fill because there's no one even willing to put their name out there. These are three tremendously qualified candidates. I would agree. I think Heather Sykes and Tom Bell are, are probably better. I think mainly because I think if, if Will Ashton is willing to serve on another board somewhere, that would be great if we can hook him and land him for another board that is that he's willing to serve on would be great.
I think he's listening.
Yeah. Don't clue, don't clue him in.
I mean, I hope so, because, you know, with qualified candidates that are, you know, stepping up, the CONCOM is a very demanding position to begin with time-wise. And it's very thoughtful and has a lot of impact on buildings, on homeowners and things like that. So we need very good people and there's three of them. But, you know, I'm going to go with Heather Sykes and Tom Bell if, if Will Ashton is willing to do another position somewhere.
I, I think the other exciting thing to say is that, you know, we, we have now formed all of these master plan working groups. I mean, there's so many opportunities. Those are going to end up spreading out and cross-pollinating with different committees. And I think that kind of the, the net is going to get wider in terms of wanting to bring in more people from the community. So this is all good news. Carrie?
I agree with what everyone said, and I really hate this type of decision because all three of them are qualified. And Will Ashton, this is almost a compliment to you, even though it doesn't seem like it. You do also seem really qualified with your particular skill set for some other committees. And I know that's not the main reason why we should make a decision, but I actually think there are some other really good spots for Will right now that we need his voice on in some other areas of town. So I'm hoping that you take that as a compliment, Will, because you're absolutely qualified for CONCOM. I just agree in terms of fit. The other two are probably a little bit better fit right this minute.
Great. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll take that. I make a motion to appoint Heather Sykes and Tom Bell to the Conservation Commitment, Conservation Commission.
It is a commitment.
For, what's the term?
Commission for one year. Yep.
Conservation, one year appointments.
Associate.
Associate members for one year. Associate members for one-year appointments.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Great, thank you, thank you all very much. I know it is hard to to um, you know, pick, um, but we have to. And uh, we will be reaching out to both of them with their uh, Tom and Heather with appointment letters and kind of the next steps to get them on-boarded. And also um, we'll be reaching out to Will with some other options um in the next couple of days, so thank you. Um, the next, next on the agenda is a film permit. Who, Chris, do you have details on that?
Do you have the application?
Hang on. The application's on the OneDrive. Okay. Can you pull it up?
Yeah, yeah, I could show, I I can, let me, you want me to show it on the screen?
If you could, I I.
And by the way, the applicant has just appeared on the screen too, Mr. Uh, is it Canassas or Nassas? Canassas.
Nassas.
All right, so let me, let me show it so you have it.
Okay. So what I'm gonna ask Mr. Canassas to to do, if he could unmute himself, is just kind of give us the the high points of this, the the date, the hours of filming, which we we just saw, but just kind of walk us through what you're doing and how many people so that we can uh consider some kind of questions for you.
Sure, sure. Thank you, uh, thank you for your time. I appreciate it uh very much. This is a a totally independent thing, it's a passion project of mine. It is something that I I tried to raise funding for uh for a while, but couldn't do it, so I just kind of decided to do it myself. The main thing being um the iPhone, the new iPhone, the video is stellar, it's 4K. So we're shooting it on the iPhone. It would be uh the iPhone, a tripod, two lights, two small lights, um, four actors, um, and an assistant. And I believe one of the actor's parents uh would be there too, because he's uh, he's fifteen. And it's a dialogue scene where this kid asks um uh the main character, Ally, uh, to the dance. Uh, she's sitting on the stone slab in front of the the library, um, and he gets uh humiliated by two bullies.
Don't give it away.
And if, yeah, I'm sorry.
Can we drive by and hawk and?
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, if if you want. But uh, it's it's pretty simple, you know, like I I originally wrote it for an interior uh, you know, before COVID. And it's just been like, it's been like amazing, like rewriting certain scenes, um, you know, putting everything outside. Ninety-five percent of this story takes place outside now. Um, and it's made a lot of the film better, uh tighter storytelling, more original locations. But I really wanted to find a school that, you know, had a, had a, looked like it had a history, a lived-in look, a charming New England feel to it. I didn't want like a brand-new school, you know, that that looked like any school. And I drove by Paul Pratt, I've always driven by Paul Pratt Library um when I'm in Cohasset. And I just thought, well, that could double for a school, or at least a section of a school.
And it was, at one time, a school.
It used to be.
Oh, really?
Yep.
When when was this? What year, when, what period was this?
The original Ozgood School.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, the Ozgood School, yeah, okay, all right, because the other one's in the uh kind of in the back, right, beside uh another school?
Yeah, I can't remember when it closed, like maybe in the eighties or early nineties. But anyway, um, one, one of the things, um, I didn't ask you for your name and address. If you could just, just give us that before you close your comments um for the record and um and then just remind us of the day and times.
Me?
Yes, you, sorry.
Sorry, I'm Anthony Canassas, uh, my address is nine Richard Road in Hingham.
Okay, great.
And uh, I'm requesting uh September twenty-seventh, Sunday, from eight-thirty AM to twelve-thirty PM. Uh, we'd be out of there by twelve-forty-five.
Do you see any, um, it looks like you, you had five to six people, do you see uh any disruption to the street? Are you gonna be in the road at all? I know sometimes we've had issues with film crews occupying some streets, so just speak to that, please.
No, no, we um, we were actually planning on on just parking our cars uh at the uh, the lot behind the school next to the playground. If that's cool.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, Carrie?
Yeah, first of all, it seems like a really cool idea. I'm excited to watch the movie eventually, but especially because the library isn't open yet. I feel like there won't, there will be minimal disruptions, so I'm totally fine with this happening.
Thank you.
Chris?
Oh, I just let everybody know, Bronwyn Nelson, the acting library director, did clear this to the board of trustees of the library. And they, they seem to be fine with it, so long as they follow safety protocols and whatever the, you know, the board requires.
Great, thank you for noting that. Paula or Jack, any questions?
No, I'm good.
Yep, Paul?
Oh, yeah, this will give new life to the uh old Ozgood School. Um, I think it's a great idea, and I'm uh willing to uh make a motion to approve the application for Film the Anger nine twenty-seven twenty-twenty, uh eight-thirty AM to closing at uh one PM.
Second, okay, uh, roll call vote?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
That was easy. Great, thank you and good luck.
Thank you so much, I I, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate it so much.
You're welcome. We look forward to hearing more about it.
Absolutely.
Okay. So as a part of our monthly financial update, um, Chris, I'm gonna turn it over to you and Paula.
Okay, so we have, Paul will be ju- jumping up, as I said, she's jumping up, uh, the quarterly update on investments, this'll be through June thirtieth. And um, and I'll turn it over to Paul.
Hi Paula, thank you.
Hi Paula, thank you.
Yep, um, so like Chris said, this is for the quarter ending June thirtieth. And so the vast majority of the returns, they're, they're all positive for the quarter, they're one-year, three-years, five-years. And um, the the year-to-date are the only ones we really have any negatives, and most of them are negative, although one did manage a a positive return. But over the long term, we're pretty close to our respective benchmarks, which is always a good thing. So for expendable trusts, we're up like between three and almost five percent for the quarter. And mixed for the calendar year, one of our accounts lost two percent and the other one gained a little bit over three percent. Um, we're up one to eight percent for the year. We're up two to five percent for three years and up three to five percent for five years. The permanent trusts, they're up six-point-two percent for the quarter and down one-point-seven for the calendar year-to-date, up four-point-three for the year and up five-point-four for three years, up six-point-five for five years and six-point-two since inception, which was back in two thousand and fourteen. The OPEB, they're up seven to fifteen-point-seven percent for the quarter and down two-point-one to three-point-six for calendar year-to-date. Up one-point-nine to two-point-six for the year, up four-point-eight to five-point-six for three years. And up five-point-five percent to six-point-two percent for five years and four-point-four to six-point-one for since inception. Um, if you'll recall, we um, we passed that prudent investor and we've gone ahead and changed the the policy to include that. Uh, this was the first time, this is the first quarter that we actually had any returns and uh made any changes for that. And what we did do, this is strictly in the permanent trust section now. But we, some of the common stock was sold off. We didn't like divest of any one particular stock, we just took a little bit from a a bunch of different ones. And uh, we added more diversif- diversifying funds, international equity and international fixed income for now to kind of help round out the the portfolio. As it turns out, the legalist um stocks tend to do pretty well in a down market, so there was no like immediate need to to get rid of all those at this point, so so that's where we are. Any questions on? On that?
No, it's just, it's it's just very interesting how investments work somewhat differently than the economy. The the, you know, Main Street economy, if you will.
Well, yeah, everything was down in March, but now we're back up, yeah, so. We'll see how it goes for the rest of the year, right?
Absolutely. And so with with respect to the permanent trusts and the legalists' reallocations that you did, there's, there's, it's kind of spread out such that we're not really tracking whatever, what difference that made. And you made conscious decisions, and this is like a rectomy if I'm wrong kind of statement. You made choices not to move into a more diversified portfolio in some cases because the legalist stocks in particular were gonna be um, were likely to be more positive. Does that make sense?
Well, we we made moves, we made moves to be to be more diversified for sure. There was no international stuff because that's not on the legal list. Um, and there's things like for the fixed income, you can do, you know, government assets, but you can't really do credit so much. And so we did a little bit of that as well, so there's a little bit more um diversity. But, you know, the the legalist stocks themselves, they have different things in late healthcare, for example. So we've got a couple of healthcare, like Pfizer's one of them, and they've got, you know, so we didn't necessarily get rid of all those.
Yep.
We we maybe reduced our position in those to give us that diversification. But this isn't really necessarily a great time to go selling a whole bunch of, you know, stock that is, you know, kind of blue-chip.
Gonna, gonna do, do.
Been around forever kind of stock.
Okay.
Right.
Yep.
And dividend, some of them are dividend-paying as well, too, so.
Okay, that makes sense.
But we may do more of that over time.
Terrific, makes sense. Any questions? Okay, yep, Corey?
I was just, you know, I'm new, but so, you know, just a a thirty-thousand-foot view of uh, you know, how we're doing, what our goals are with this fund, you know, kind of where we're headed here.
Well, it depends on the the different funds. The expendable trusts, they're in more fixed income and less in the, in the stocks. Because during any of the town meetings, everyone, the town can vote to to spend some of that money. Generally, not all of it all at once, but we still need to be prepared to to um, you know, meet capital needs or, you know, for the enterprise funds or for the town itself. With the permanent trusts, those tend to be more like scholarships and cemetery funds. And those, generally, the principal amount is restricted, you can't spend that money. So that can be a little bit more i- in the equities because you only get to spend the interest, so it's a small percentage of what you have. Um, and then the OPEB obviously is much longer term, and that actually, we can use the prudent investor standard as well. So that also would be um into stocks, equities, you know, even um private equity and stuff like that through PRIT. So that would be even more aggressive.
Chris, probably something we should put on a future meeting is to kind of bring Paula back and talk about where we're at with all of our um financial policies, some of which, you know, we've tweaked recently, some of which we haven't looked at in a while. It it just might be a good way of getting us all kind of uh on on the same page about, you know, what what our strategies have been across the board. And then also, in that same discussion, maybe discussing bond council and and how that relationship works with Paula.
Yeah, we can do that.
That makes sense?
Yeah, um, yeah, we'll set some, uh, and we we try to look at the policies at at the, at least annually. And if there's needs to be updates, we bring them back to the board. That's an important thing, so the policies live, we actually follow them and and we bring it back to you and the advisory committee um to get input.
Well, and and, yeah, and maybe, maybe it's, maybe we think about a a joint meeting or with, and it could be off-cycle in terms of our Tuesday meetings um with the advisory committee. And that might be an opportunity also to discuss um budget message. So I'm making notes, you're making notes. Thank you. Okay, anything else, Paula or any of the members of the board? All right.
Chris, did you want to talk about now or a different time or?
Yeah, we're gonna bring uh, now, we're gonna bring Don. You could give us that update on where we are in terms of collections.
So we're morphing into FY twenty-one. Is that correct?
We are, we are, we are in FY twenty-one.
Here we are.
We're in the first quarter of FY twenty-one.
Hello.
And uh, and Don will give us that, I, so you all have the packet that went out. Uh, and Don, let me know if there's anything you want me to show on the screen, and I will.
Um, yeah, you wanted to bring up, we'll go through uh the way I usually go, we'll go general fund first, then we'll go through the enterprise fund. So Chris, if you want to pull up uh the local receipts report, that would be great.
Time is so bizarre, Don, it feels like you were here last week. I hope you don't feel that way.
Well, we did just do the FY twenty year-end a couple of, so this is now the regular updates for FY twenty-one. So remember, we, this is one of those we'll talk about in a few minutes, we're committing to do regular updates with all of yous to to show where we are.
Great.
Yeah. So ju- just a a quick overall for for all departments, we're we're in really good shape. General funds, we are looking at already within the first two months, we're at twenty-five-point-seven percent of the budget collected, which is great, twenty-six percent is property tax from our first quarter billing. Lo- local receipts, we're slightly down from where we were last year. Two of the bigger items there, uh, motor vehicle excise. And to me, I, it seems like this is uh more of a timing issue based on when the smaller. So normally, the big commitments for each fiscal year occur February or March or January, somewhere in that, in that timeframe. But then throughout the calendar year, as new cars are purchased and uh their trade-ins and things like that, additional commitments are issued from uh the RMV. So I don't think it's a big problem, it's just, to me, it seems like a timing thing, but I just wanted to make that note.
Don, when, when you say we're off in that um, the local receipts, is that the percentage of the current budget or off the last fiscal?
Year-over-year.
We budgeted less in that, right?
So you, we did budget less uh from last year to be conservative. But this is purely just looking at year-over-year activity. So again, not, not percentage of budget, but just compared to where we were last year at this time. And so that's why, to me, it does appear to be more of a timing issue. And, you know, the 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 smaller commitments that occur throughout the fiscal year, after the main commitment in the spring, vary from, from commitment to commitment, depending on activity. So um, it could be timing, it could be less purchases. But the amount that we're we're down year-over-year is not quite alarming to me at this point. Again, just wanted to make that note because we are watching the motor vehicle excise. We did reduce our estimate um based on on our COVID budget that we went for to town meeting. And then really, the only other, to me, in in the local receipt area, that was a larger decrease year-over-year was investment earnings. Now, we just know, you know, different uh economic climate than we were a year ago. However, we we're still at thirty-nine percent of the budget two months in, so compared to the budget, we're in great shape. Just wanted to make that point, when you look at that page, when you see the year-over-year, we are lower, but uh, again, not a big concern at this point for me.
Don, if you don't, if you don't mind, just expand on the, you said timing issue, is that, are you referencing more that there may be a delay coming from RMV to us? Or is it just the seasonality of car purchases that's, you know, we may not have seen the the comeback on that?
It could be a little bit of both, I I, to be, to be honest, I didn't do a in-depth look. Paula may have a little better answer than 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 that at this point. Go, Paula.
Yeah, the um, the registry of motor vehicles, they're not necessarily on a, like a schedule. They just package up the the bills when when they see fit and then they send them out to all the towns and then they bill. So from one year to the next, you know, between, you know, the the first three months of the year, you might have one commitment or two commitments, depending on when the RMV sends out the bills and when you send them out. Right, so then you're not gonna get the receipts in if you don't, if we don't send out the bills for some reason.
Okay.
All right. I, I actually have some, some charts, and we can show that, and I'll show you exactly what I'm talking about.
So, so I guess, I mean, is it possible that there's some sort of large, you know, quantity that we're just a few weeks behind, just receiving?
Yeah, or the bills just went out and so people haven't started paying them yet. But as you get, like, like Don said, the beginning of the year, you put out over a million dollars, and, and that's, that's in February. The ones that come after that, you know, get increasingly smaller typically. The next one, you know, would be a hundred thousand or something like that. This time of the year, they're, they're probably all under 50,000. So they're not big chunks, but if you just send out a bill, it can kind of throw off your, your percentages depending on the timing, so.
So it's not likely that we'll recover or make that gap much smaller because the, the bills are getting smaller as the year goes on? If we're starting this far behind?
Well, I mean, Don, I, I don't, I'm not looking at this thing. I'm not showing, let me bring up Ryan.
Yeah, like I said, I, I didn't, I didn't look at the individual commitments to date. But again, that gap could be made up if we build at the very end of August. We won't receive anything until September or maybe later. So that gap, if you're looking at number of commitments or amounts of commitments during this fiscal year, that gap could be made up. Again, and that's why I referenced timing. But without.
Yeah, I think there's a 50,000, 1, 50,000 dollar commitment, Don, that you may not have.
Okay.
Chris, did you want to say something?
I was just going to show the screen that Paul was talking about, which I think I'm showing. Which shows
Right.
Percentage collected year-to-date. So as of, why don't you talk about?
Yeah, this, on the top, there it goes through 630. But if you look down at the bottom, I did it today, just so you can see where, where it's at. And so we've actually, you see how it's, now the bill billed is up to 1.75 million versus the 1.624.
Yeah, it's a much smaller gap.
So I think some of those commitments came on afterwards. I don't have the dates on the right, but on the right-hand side, you can see the actual commitments this year versus last year in the yellow there. So we actually have more bills out, and, and we actually have a greater dollar amount and a greater number of bills, actually.
Than last year. That's great.
Great, okay.
So to Don's point, it's not a concern right now.
Right. It's just something you have to understand with motor vehicle.
It, it's also important now that Paul's talking about the collect. We, we book it on a, on a fiscal year basis. She's talking about this on a calendar year basis. That's how they bill. So we got our biggest chunk after the new year, the calendar new year, but it's right in the middle of the fiscal.
Exactly.
Don, you can continue.
All right. Then on the expenditure side, we're, we're at a total of 19.2% spent. But again, when you talk about timing, we pay a lot of debt service upfront. We're scheduled in July and August, and then would be six months later. So based on the time and when that debt service is paid, it makes the bud, the overall budget appear to be a bit high. But when you take that into account, our transfers to other funds, which would be our, some of our stabilization funds, and then also employee benefits, we have about 2.5, 2.6 million dollar pension assessment that we pay in July so that we could take advantage of savings, paying it early. I think we save about 40 or 50,000 by paying it in one installment versus two, or one payment versus two installments over the year. So we try to take advantage of that whenever we can, which we've, we've been able to do well before I came here, so. And another thing that, that I did note was that, looking at the public safety line item included in that through August, so July and August is about $80,000 that's posted there related to COVID-related expenses that, as we go through the fiscal year, by December 30th, I will have those expenditures reclassed to either CARES grant or FEMA grant. So right now, they're parked in the general fund in a specific line item that, that I built in there to keep track of everything in one place. So that, right now, is being reported in that line. So again, another, another reason we're 19.2. If you look at it over year-over-year, where we are two months in versus the entire year, we're in, we're in really good shape on, on the expenditure side as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, any questions on the board?
Chris, would you mind pulling up the water fund? So water fund. Revenue is, we're in good shape, 18.8% received. Couple items to note, based on year-over-year comparison. User charges, quarter one billing, our commitment was about $200,000 higher. So collections, when you look at the usage charges received, 175,000, which is, which is great. That's about, I didn't write the percentage down, but I think it was about 20 or 30% increase over last year. Capital recovery fee is up. And then the sale of water to Linden Pond is, is also up, again, based on, on the amount of consumption and usage. Two months in, that's great. Again, there's, there's some revenues as we go through the year and doing these reports. There are certain, there are certain commitments that are done twice a year versus four times a year. So, or, or even once a year. So there's an annual receipt or a payment from the town to the water department for all the town's usage in the capital recovery fee for the, for the hydrant fee. We also pay monthly for usage, so that's not showing up yet. Hydrant distribution charges, that is billed, I think, in the second commitment. So again, 18.8% received through two months is, is really good. And then looking at the expense side is, is the same thing as kind of talking about the general fund. We have debt service that, when you look two months in, we've already spent 50%. That's due to pre-established debt service payments in July and August. And then we posted the indirect trans, indirect cost transfer and the capital project transfer that was voted at town meeting as well for their capital plan. So when you actually operate, they're only at 11.5% of their budget spent to date, which, again, they've been doing a great job being conservative in their budgeting year-over-year. And, and this just continues to show how well they've been doing.
Okay. Any questions on water? Sewer?
Finally sewer. So because sewer, the commitments are based on water usage, there was an increased commitment level as well. So they are also year-over-year ahead in total, about $120,000 ahead from where we were last year. Two of the bigger items, usage charges up 16%. And then sewer connection fees is up 200% or $46,000. So those two make a big bulk of what our year-over-year increases. And so year-to-date, we're at 21.5% of the budget received. And again, that's great because just like the timing of some of the revenues on the water side, there's also similar items on the sewer side when we talk about the sewer betterment. So it shows that we've collected $46,000 so far. That would have been most likely from prior year commitment. So FY20, FY19 revenues from those commitment years. Because the sewer commitments in the general fund and in sewer do not get committed until the January 1 commitment. So 21.5% collected to date is, is really good shape. And then same thing on the expenditure side, like we just talked with, with the water. Due to timing, you can see we've, we've to date spent 75% of our debt service, again, based on predetermined payment schedule, our transfers for indirects and near capital stabilization transfer. And we're 12.3% operating. So overall, all three funds are doing great. And we'll continue to monitor and, and report back to you folks on a monthly basis.
Great, thank you. Good work. Thanks, Paul.
So how much of the increased revenue do you think is from just stay-at-home from the point of lockdown? Because, you know, a, a year from now, as we, you know, we open back up, you may see a dip in the revenues from just usage. You know, I, I think that, I, I'm just curious as to year-over-year, what it looked like?
We could, I, I don't know the details of who, what customers, but it could be a big part of people being home. But the offset, too, is, you know, the schools are a big pay for the water department. And if kids aren't in school and, and the teachers weren't there all summer.
Yeah.
So without those details, I, I really can't say, but.
It's a good point because I, I tease Leonore Jenkins all the time. I said, oh, I'm using so much water at home, and you're, you're going to be, you know, going to get all these revenues. And she said, yeah, but our biggest customer are the schools, is the town. And, you know, they're not in session. Chris?
But I will, to, to follow up on that point, Paul, I, I distribute the, the, the monthly usage numbers, and they've been up for five straight months. In fact, it, it was like a peak this summer. I think it was in July. It was like almost an all-time monthly water usage peak in Cohasset. And that was partly driven by people being at home, the fact that it was a drought, everybody was on. And, and now that, there's been water restrictions put into place since then. So, and now school's back in session, at least partly. So that said, I think a lot of adult, a lot of parents that would normally, or adults in general, who would normally be committing to Boston are still not doing that, so they're at home. And so there's more of that water use. And again, the drought hasn't gone away, even though there's water use restrictions. So people are still watering within the boundaries. Hopefully, they're following the rules. It did slow down a little bit. The August number was still up over last year. It wasn't up as much. I think, I think then one of the numbers earlier in the year was up by 40% or something crazy. So I, I, I would say that if, and again, it's not points out, too, the schools were, were closed in June, right? So in May and June, and actually, most of March, April, May and June. And, and water use rates soar.
Still went up.
I do expect to level out a little bit, partly because people should be not using as much water as we get into the season anyway. Because, you know, we, we, there's no, there really isn't any rain in the forecast, I'm afraid. So we do have to be, it's great that people are using it from a revenue point of view. But from an environmental point of view, we've got to be a little bit more careful about as we enter the fall. Watch the water levels.
Great, okay. Thank you. Any, any last questions? Don and Paula, thank you both very much.
All right, thank you.
For joining us. We'll see you in a few short weeks.
All right, take care.
If you, if you want to just hang out behind the scenes, Don, for, for a minute or two?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we've got to pivot to the select board goals. I just want to talk, actually, I could, if both of you, you just want to hang out for just a second? If we, if you, if there's any other questions about where we are on the budget?
No.
About the fiscal stability goal, and, and let me just, let me just. There's so many screens.
So as, as you see on the agenda, there's the two of our four goals is financial stability, which is something we'll be checking in on frequently. And, and then capital infrastructure, which I think Chris is pivoting us to. And then at our next meeting, we will tackle the other goals, including the health goal, which we need to drill down on some of the very specific projects within that. So we'll take that up in October.
So goal three, as you see here, to actively review, evaluate, and assess town finances challenged by the current economic climate. And one of the things that we committed to doing, which we've been doing tonight, is monthly updates with all of you, more, a little more in depth. And we're also including these quarterly tax and main revenue collections. There is that, some of those have always been part of the packet that you get. You know, there's that graph, you know, the, here, I can show you quickly. I think for, for viewers at home, there's this chart we give every, we send out to everybody, which kind of gives you a year-to-date, you know, where we are month-to-month from last year to this year, and also, you know, where we are as much of the budget. Obviously, a lot of, you know, the motor vehicle, as we discussed, is very light. You can see that licenses and permits are kind of where they were last year, but a little bit below. Fees still a little bit below. And again, you can see, you know, these are all charts, things that are very easy to, easy to graph. And so we share this with all of you. We're also doing an update with advisory on Thursday, Thursday night, Don and I. And we're going to continue doing these monthly updates for both you and for advisor. We had not historically done these with advisory in the fall, but we're going to continue to do that. Another thing we've talked about with Don is actually getting these now up on the website. So after we present it to all of you and talk about them, we're going to post them on the town website so folks can see them. And, you know, they have any questions, they can, you know, ask. And one of the things we've also talked about doing is possibly doing a little mini video to post to maybe explain it, because I have that executive summary that you all get to. So if Don is willing, maybe he, I, and maybe Paula, depending on where we're talking, back into a little quickie roundtable. And then people can watch, you know, the, the five-minute monthly video summary of finances. So since we have these platforms, we might as well use it, right? It's easy enough to do a little quick, little video summary. So we're hoping to start doing that with this month. So once this, we're done with the presentations on Thursday, if there's something else to update, we'll, we'll do the first round and post these up on the finance department's website. So people will see them. I'll put a link and let people know on the Facebook page.
Just, just one, one sort of detail that different people ask about, and I don't have answers to, is, is just, you know, what, how much money are we getting for COVID or CARES Act or any others, you know, specific, unique to this time, money? And how, how is that getting spent and circulated? I know Don referenced some of the costs that'll be, you know, redirected or whatever the accounting word is in December, you know, out of public safety, for example, into other funding. It would just be a good, I, I would like to see a snapshot, shot of that, not necessarily every month, but just, you know, at some point in this, this, you know, in the next couple of months of what's come in that's outside of our operating budget, and, and how is that getting apportioned?
That can, that can be done. I was actually, as I was waiting for the agenda items to get to mine, I was working on my COVID summary. Just, you know, I mean, I do, every, every week, we have a vendor warrant where we're paying bills, and I keep track of a master spreadsheet of everything we spend out of these accounts so that I can, A, track it for where we have to spend it or, or reclass it to either CARES or FEMA. Because FEMA, there's certain costs that FEMA will cover 75%. There are certain things they won't cover at all, that 100% goes to CARES. So I have all of that summarized by specific categories through June, which I can, I can put that into a nicer format and update you and send that to the group and get that up online. I'm working on now, just going through July through now, making sure I have everything recorded properly and coded for my reclassing purposes and reporting for state and federal report requirements. So I can definitely give you the update through June in the next day or so I can send that out to everybody. Basically, what, there's various categories for CARES and FEMA. So I've been tracking them based on accelerated telework capacity, which is basically anything related to Zoom subscriptions, more laptops that people needed to work from home. Really, anything related to the network, anything that we need to, to run these Facebook live chats go in there. PPE is another reporting category. Cleaning and disinfection of public buildings. Signage and communication, grocery and mail delivery, which is a small one. But again, it's a, a specific category that both FEMA and CARES has. And then really, the other bucket is anything that isn't specific in these categories, but is COVID-related, and we had to spend the money because we normally wouldn't have. A couple of examples there would be payments to Sandy Beach. We had them monitor the public parking lot. Track the in-and-out, how many people were there. So that was an expense of about $1,800 a month through the entire summer. Other costs outside of some of these categories would be our annual town meeting. We had it outside. That, that is in the other category. So I can provide you through June 30th, kind of where we're at based on these categories. That, that is in the other category. So I can provide you through June 30th, kind of where we're at based on these categories. And then if you want further detail, I could summarize it by vendor and just basically share with you guys what I have so far.
That's great. I think a snapshot, you know, through June 30th, just so we understand kind of what, what's counting and not. And then, you know, as we get deeper into, towards December, maybe we can have a larger discussion about that. I think it would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll do that. I guess we'll do a quarter, Donald's or June, then we could do a, do the first quarter, you know, the July, September, sometime later October, as Don gets a lot pulled together.
Yeah, that would, that would be perfect, actually.
And I'd say based on all the things that are going on in Washington, I don't think anybody's going to expect any action anytime soon on any kind of additional money. So what we've got is what we've got. And when it, when it, by the, at this point, that's all we're going to plan to have. So the, so one of the other things we, we've been talking about is doing some kind of a, some educational videos, whether, you know, it's us talking, just so again, some of the stuff is hard. If you're not, if you don't live this or do it every day, you don't even understand how the process works. So I think we're going to try to do some videos this fall. Just have on the website, just educational. How does the budget work? How does the process work? You know, who approves what, that kind of stuff. And there's also, so we've been talking about doing board and committee training. One of the, one of the, the side benefits, and it's, there are not many of them, but one of them is that the state's pushed a lot of stuff online that wasn't online before. So they have a lot of training materials, which we think we can share. And we may actually post up on the website or at least put links on. So people can then go and there's a lot of training the state would do in person. And they've done a lot of that now and pushed online. So there's a whole, which I bookmarked and I won't share with you now, there's a ton of material. So we might actually, you know, try to do some in-service training and, you know, if any board committee, we can, we can play them and have people log onto a Zoom site and we can play them that way. That way we know who came. We can also push out links to people. Obviously, if you want to do it and ensure that people are here, we should do it on a Zoom platform or something. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of resources that I think we want to put out for people and I'll let people become more unisibly fiscal literate, particularly those who have to deal with this on a regular basis. And a couple of new members coming on Finia, on advisory coming soon, I think we would be doing some onboarding with them anyway. So it's a probably a great opportunity.
Just, just in terms of training videos, Chris, putting on one of my other hats, which is the Maya, the Maya program. You know, I know that they have had discussions about, you know, training for public officials. And or, you know, just healthy choice kind of things. And so to the extent that they're appropriate for some of the boards and committee members, and they're not necessarily employee specific related. You know, it might be something just to look there for possible resources for, you know, for, for anybody serving the town.
We've been using a lot of those for employees and Paula can talk to that, or if you want, because she's the one of the, she's the one of the co-chairs of the wellness committee.
Yeah.
In fact, she just pushed out the fall, the fall, you know, Zoom. I think it's like, what'd you say, planting Paula, you know, like planting, you know, it's the outdoor activity.
It's a gardening series that, there's Zoom sessions, 30 minute sessions with somebody with 25 years experience in gardening. How to garden at home, bring plants in from the, in for the winter, stuff like that. So it was kind of cool. It's a little different than some of the other stuff we've done.
But we've done a lot. So we've been pushing a lot of videos out to staff. There's a lot of training videos on my, which has been great. I have been very deliberate. I actually started a whole, a whole like life balance thing. It was supposed to be like, like some, some yoga, some like.
Mindfulness.
Mindfulness. Thank you. That's the word. Well, I didn't, I didn't stick with it very well. So I keep, I get this, I get the updates on my text. I get text updates.
Right.
As far as, so, and they really are great. So, and again, we're happy to share what we can with anyone, you know, any of you or anyone.
Yeah, just flag them, I think, if they, if they make sense in terms of serving the town.
And, you know, we've posted for the community at large, there's been some links to, you know, other, you know, kind of mindfulness and wellness and things that we found that people can access publicly. We have those.
That's great.
Yeah, I was going to do that mindfulness too, but I forgot about it.
I'm with Jack.
Just, just.
I couldn't resist.
Eat your spinach. Sure. That makes you stronger or something. Carrie, did you have a comment or?
I think the video idea is great. And I think offering some more video type programming as the weather gets colder and people are back inside more is really important. So let's continue on this track.
You know, one of the things we tried, we talked about back in the last fall. And, you know, we had a member of the advisory who's otherwise preoccupied right now with other things. Started, you know, we did a couple of Facebook Live things and at least we tried to. And now that we actually are, I wouldn't say terribly skilled. I had trouble getting us on Facebook Live tonight, by the way. I'm not sure what part of the Facebook page we're on. We're on some part of it, but not one, not what we normally are, because it wouldn't link right. So I think we will. Carrie, I'd like to do something where we may have like a round table and then answer Facebook Live questions about the budget. You know, we could do that.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to schedule that. So if any of you want to take part, let me know and we can set something up and do a live Zoom Facebook thing. And Don would love to, you know, spend an hour chatting about finance.
We also have, we also have that great cable access. And also.
I'll be able to live round table. I probably have the highest ratings ever on 143 TV. We get our.
Well, and before you know it, we're going to be entering into FY22 budget with, with a whole lot of unknowns. So.
So that's, that's kind of a look at some of the things we're doing and you know, so it's fairly, you know, we're doing a lot, we always do a lot of updates, more of them and spread them more widely. And again, if there's anything that the board wants to do more, just, just ask and, you know, we'll plug in. So. I think Jack has another question.
Yep.
Yeah. By the way, Chris, I wanted to thank you. That was very nice that you got the safe harbor survey up there. That's wonderful. I mean, this is something that the whole community and I know the select board and you personally are strong supporters. What, you know, can I ask you, could we get together sometime later this week or probably next week with you and maybe Nicole? And see if there's one or two concrete things that would help to move this forward. Could we maybe get together in a meeting? Probably, I think at this point, it'd be better off beginning of next week. Is that, could that, would that work in your schedule?
I'll, I'll have, I'll, yeah, I'm happy to have Tracy work to set something up, Jack.
Okay, good.
We'd like to be able to get that video. We'd like to be able to get the survey out as long as possible, as far as possible. I do know that Nicole has been working on, again, this is a little bit of a digression. I'm sorry, Diane. The, Nicole has been working with the schools because now they're just starting, right? And she really, those school kids, that was one of the things we were going to be engaging in the spring. So she's been working very closely and, you know, they have to kind of get their sea legs under them, getting this new year started today. So the hope is that as we get into this, and probably more likely in October, after they've had a few weeks, student ambassadors and others will start to engage and try to get some of those middle school kids, which is really a key target area to get them engaged. Get their input. And so we're definitely looking forward to that.
And this is. This, this is part of.
No, I mean, that way, why we have us, not this week, but beginning of next week. And just, just to see if there's some concrete things. And thanks, Chris. That would be a big help. I appreciate it.
Yeah. And then just, this is, this is part of that, that overall healthy portion. And I, I have been in touch with Nicole. And, you know, I know that we would be looking for them to make a presentation coming. And they have that ground level cafe that we approved for October 2nd. I think that's going to be one of the first times where they're really, they're getting, first of all, they have so many youth ambassadors. It's like almost everybody, every kid in town is a youth ambassador and, which is so fantastic. So I, I see great things going, especially as the school starts to get into a rhythm and a cadence for the, for the year. Definitely on our list.
Best thing we could do as a town.
So Chris.
Yes. Anything else on finance? Anyone? So that, so those are a lot of things we're looking to do and we're going to tee it up, obviously, quarterly, monthly, quarterly. And again, we'll, we'll circle back and getting some of these, you know, live Facebook and other videotaped things together. We'll talk more in the next month or two.
So let's move into capital infrastructure. And I know that one of the members of the town hall building committee has been hanging out with us. Screen for a while.
Thank you, Don and Paula. You're welcome to hang out if you want. And I know.
Thanks, Don and Paula.
We have Mark, we're going to invite up. And if Phil wants to join up, just, he could just like wave his hand or something. Why don't I just promote him anyway?
Where's Phil? Is he's in the waiting room?
If he wants to join us.
Thanks for sitting with us, Mark.
So here is.
Welcome aboard, Phil.
The capital, second goal, capital infrastructure, advancing discussion, identified capital infrastructure projects, including the Elm Street corridor, inter-ministerial water and sewer and the town hall renovation. Obviously, inter-ministerial water and sewer, you've all been deeply engaged in the last two weeks, last night and the week before. And now the sewer commission and Brian Joyce and others are going to be deep, deep diving into some of the data and playing things together. And that, that work's starting. And so that, that's something that's already in progress. And we have Phil Lair and Mark Cameron, Phil, the chair. And are you the vice chair now, Mark? I'm not even sure. I know I see you all the time. So, okay. He, he's just a volunteer, likes to appear on Zoom. So, so if I can have them both give us a quick update on where town hall is.
And you're both muted.
There we go. Mark's trying to do, Mark's trying to do a little presentation of where we're at now.
Thank you.
Hanging out, supporting.
Do you need to show anything on the screen, Mark? Do I need to give you a power to put anything on the screen? Are you good?
No, I'm good. Can you hear me okay?
Great. Thank you.
So just a good updated, we've got a good overall team now. We've got an architect and an owner's project manager that's, that's helping us. And we're just getting to the stages where we can start involving other design team members, the mechanical, electrical, fire protection consultants. For the most of the summer here, we've been working to identify the programming requirements, the square footage and the departmental needs of what everyone's looking for. So we've, we, we were able to take that information, model it into several different layouts. Both utilizing the existing foundation and rebuilding the structure on the existing foundation of the annex side. And we've, we've proved that out to not be something that was worthwhile. And the committee made a vote, the full committee made a vote to proceed with one basic layout. And subcommittee then subsequently met to further that, enhance design and make some tweaks and move things around. We presented that modified layout to the entire committee this evening, just before this meeting. And there was a unanimous vote to move that design into the next stage of development. So as of tonight, we're moving that, the architect is going to then take the other design consultants, mechanical, electrical, fire protection, and bring them into the equation to design. And then subsequently we'll be able to put a price to or start some, the cost analysis of where that comes in. So just in terms of some of the key features of what we're designing, we've got something that's a universal access. So everybody coming in the same door, which would be on the side at what we call the side lot there. So coming in a side entrance there. Handicap, everything would be the same access point. The auditorium would be.
Can we throw this on the screen? I mean, I've seen, I've seen the previous ones, but I'd love to show everybody kind of what you're talking about. It's kind of hard to imagine without it in front of me.
Sure. I guess. Christopher.
Chris, you're muted.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have it. So let me give you. Hold on.
And, and this, you know, it would be, it would be great to see something, but this is really a check in and we probably should, you know, be intentional about scheduling a time or having the, the town hall building committee have a meeting where, where it makes sense to invite the public to listen to you. You know, if you're sitting around with mechanical engineers, that might not be the right time. But, you know, if you're really starting to, you know, you want to start socializing the design, then, you know, just keep us posted and we'll try to support you with that.
Yeah, I don't think we wanted to get into too many specifics tonight. We just, I know that we were moving forward. I think one of the challenges, I was just looking at my schedule, I went through 11 meetings on the town hall boarding meetings since April. One of the biggest challenges was, you know, the space, space assessment, trying to figure out how all your different boards and meeting rooms work together. Who needs to be in the building, who doesn't need to be in the building. And then on top of all that, we've got the COVID requirements. So you just can't pack six people in a 10 by 10 room, put them in cubicles anymore. You really have to design around that. And we wanted to be cognizant of public's access to those particular counters that they need to get in, whether they need to pay a bill or get a permit or, or whatever. So, you know, that, that changes the design from the first floor to the second floor and hides some people and brings more people to the front. But I think, you know, as Mark said, I'm not stepping on him, but we're finally got to a point where we have a, a general layout that we all like and works. So that, that's taken a while to get to that point. So we're, we're able to move forward now. You know, and it's still going to be, it's still going to be two or three months before we even get some kind of a number on that. So, you know, we've, we've still got a lot of work to go. But we're moving.
Mark, do you want the floor back?
No, I mean, the only, I mean, we, as far as the, the key design there, like I said, the universal access, the, we're programming the auditorium space to be used for the, the select board for this, for, you know, assuming we can be back in person and live at some point. And then, you know, just the general style of the building is something that would fit in character of what belongs on the common. Something that respects the size of the original town hall. It is, is the subservient to the, to the, to the original building. And, but it will have its own identity. It's not just a copy. So it's, it seems to, we've, we've gone through a few versions of things we didn't like. And we, as a committee, we were able to unanimously move this along tonight, which was, which was a big step.
Possible. And, you know, given the COVID situation, it's probably a good, a good thing we didn't go in that route. But has your general kind of design thought changed from March of 2020 to now in terms of what, what kind of a building we, we need, given some new realities? With respect to the pandemic, what's ahead?
You know, it, it pushed us not to, to pack things in there so tightly, although we're def- definitely respecting not having too much space. From a, from a structural standpoint, the old town hall, the second floor of the old town hall is very restricting. You can't take the old town, the, the second floor of old town hall and open that up to be one big giant area. So structural limitations up there dictated that a lot of those things be separate offices rather than one open space. So regardless of what we wanted up there, from that standpoint, it led us to have walls, not open cubicles, which in the end, everything, you know, good, good in this situation, because it gives us more hard bound barriers between occupants.
Great. Any other questions from board members? Carrie, get ready. Good?
Um, yeah. So this sounds really well thought out. Thank you for this update. We all know the urgency on this and how much we need this as a town. Thinking about how this didn't play out well last time and the plans did not get approved. What do we see being the major differences, Mark and Phil, with these new plans that are different from the last plans that the town didn't seem to be thrilled with?
Can I just amend that question just a tad? Because the plans were approved, it was the funding mechanism that was not approved.
Well, right. But they're kind of one in the same, right? If the plans are not, like the voters voted it down.
They voted the funding.
Which we want to avoid, and we want to avoid.
Of course, yes. Is the question, right?
Exactly. And I want to make sure we're taking the steps and being as transparent as possible to make sure this goes through completely this time, because we do need this. And I appreciate all the work you're putting in. So maybe I didn't word the question correctly, but I'm, I guess I'm trying to say, how do we avoid what happened last time happening this time?
So, so I think, I think a big part of that comes along with educating folks. I think, you, you know, it's, people were maybe voting, maybe voting one way or another, not knowing what they were really voting for. Were they voting for the project? Were they voting for the funding? Were they voting the plans? What were they voting for? And I think, you know, part of, part of what we've talked about as a committee is the communication that we provide to the community. And right now. And right now, we don't have, we need to, we're not far enough down the road to present everything to the committee. But in, in parts and segments and bits, we'll start involving the committee, involving the town with information. And in, in some way, maybe even involving the town in, in some of the decisions that, that go along with it. You know, we, we've, we've talked about options. Um, so there's, you know, naturally the money is going to be a challenge. I mean, there's no, that's, that's always going to be the, uh, the, the situation. So we're designing it right now and we're going to, uh, see where the money's, um, going to lay out and, and how that plays into it. And then proceed accordingly from there.
I, I think also we're very fortunate to have, uh, people that were on the committee before. So they went through the process. They went through, you know, all of the work to get the presentation, to get the, uh, you know, the people to support them and then have the heartbreak of having the funding drop down. So we have people that have been through it and have learned from it, and they're going to share with us how we're going to move this forward in a, in a way that the town's people accept. And as Mark said, so much of it is education and presentation. So the people really understand why we need to do this.
And, and in terms, I, I see there's a question, there's a, there is a question in the, uh, in the Q and A section. And, and it even came up in the, in the committee is, what's it going to cost? And, and the, and the reality is at this point, we don't know. We don't have, we, we have to design the building first before we can, give an, I give, give everyone a real good idea of what the building is going to cost. Now, we could tell you what a building of certain size of a square footage would cost, but it's very, it's very different. You know, it's like buying a, a low end car or an economy car or a high end car. They both go down the road, but this is going to, it, it, what level are we designing to? And we really need to get through the design with the, um, with the whole team, with, with everybody to understand, okay, here's our starting point. This is what we can get for this much money. And then if that's too much money, then we've got to work on value engineering things out.
Right. Corey?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the one thing that a few people have said is we need this. And I think it's still, you know, I think developing that idea is, is kind of primary here. Why does this need to occur? And, you know, we have a cost of a project, but the cost of the project really isn't the important thing. It's the delta between what if we do nothing? You know, we have the two options are doing nothing or building something. So, you know, I know there's some numbers, but as you guys work through your educational process, I'd encourage you to spend, you know, time trying to get the word out about, you know, if we do nothing, you know, what that would mean for the town. Are there things that we can't avoid? And that's going to help us talk about, you know, what's the real number we're spending here?
And, and I think that you're right. I think it's educating the, the people of the town as to what's going on there. And, and we've talked about that as, as a committee.
Yeah. And, and we as, as a board as well. Jack?
Yeah. Um, having been to a lot of your, uh, earlier meetings, I was impressed by the, the sense that you, the town hall building committee, you know that the cost is basically what killed the other project. And, um, I think the town is well served to understand how hard you guys have worked and how conscious you are. Clearly, we have to do it. Clearly, the town has made a decision. But that doesn't mean that you can't do it in a cost effective manner. And for now, I have seen so far, your paying attention to that is bearing fruit. So, uh, I think you're doing a good job and, and thank you and all the other members of your committee.
And, and, and just to speak to a little bit of the costs is we did spend, uh, quite a, a lot of time, evaluating the existing foundation of the annex and trying to find a way if that would work. And it became, it became, um, the decision was to, it had to go. It was becoming, uh, in, uh, a larger cost to save the foundation.
Yep.
And it was saved, it was going to be a larger cost to save the foundation, and we were going to get a building that didn't fit our needs that went on top of it. And we were going to find ourselves in a similar situation where we had a building that was underdesigned or not what we needed. And it was the, trying to take the, the cheaper road. And, and so that was one decision that we spent a lot of time on. Um, and the decision was that the foundation has to go.
But you were prudent in deciding what would go in there, which is, which is, because I was in those discussions, listening. Uh, and I was very impressed. I think you people are doing it the right way. You're approaching in a proper, proper manner and very prudent with the town staller.
Thank you. Thanks. Eleven meetings, huh, Phil, since March? I really appreciate all your work.
Yeah. Well, you know, I, but we all, we all hope that that, you know, is all worth it in the end, that we're, uh, you know, put our hard hats on in a couple of years here and actually get some dirt dug and, and, and put ourselves in the way that, uh, the employees deserve.
Yep, absolutely. Great. Thank you. Any, any, anything else? You good? Okay. Mark and Phil, thank you so much for being with us tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Chris?
Uh, there's one last piece of the, uh, the three big goals, and that was the Elm Street Corridor study. And again, we're going to be talking about the community health piece, which is a really, really big piece next meeting. We couldn't do it all tonight. So there's a lot in that. So we'll come unpack that one more next week. Uh, but the, so I think, so the Elm Street Corridor working group, which this board appointed, uh, at a prior meeting, met for the very first time today, and Diane is your representative. So do you have an update?
Yeah, we, we met today for the first time. And, um, like all the other, um, master plan implementation working groups, um, you know, a lot of it was just trying to get on the same page about what our next steps are. I, I will tell you that we discussed a couple of things. There's a lot of ideas, sort of design ideas around, um, the Elm Street Corridor. So basically, bringing the village and connecting it in a more intentional way with the harbor. You know, we talked a lot about traffic calming along Elm Street because it's apparently, you know, twice as wide as it actually needs to be. And that, that just be, makes it a thoroughfare. Streetscaping, the captain's walk, which in a lot of other communities is known as the harbor walk. And, and so there are all of these ideas, um, are going to result in a sort of design plan. And what, so there's this sort of design trajectory. What, what could this look like? And then the other kind of sector that we're focusing on is the data. You know, somebody said, well, there's no, there's no parking at the harbor, so we need to do something about parking. Well, we need to actually get that data, data, you know, it's, it's one thing to say we need this or that this street, more people speed on it than ever before. Well, let's get those facts and the data put together. And that will help, um, you know, just like with the town hall, you know, you got it, you got to get the facts and figures. What do you really need? What, what issues are you trying to address? Uh, what are problems? What are safety problems? What are aesthetic issues? So, so we're kind of working in two, um, kind of sub, subgroups amongst ourselves, which is, is focusing on, again, getting the data together and then kind of marrying it with some of the visionary design work that is coming up. And we, we, this group is like, we got to get to a deadline. So, um, we're going to meet again in two weeks and, and at least have, some of the data together so that we can actually start talking about, well, what could this look like in the future? And, you know, we're, um, it was great. It was a really good meeting. Lauren did a terrific job facilitating and, um, we'll see where it goes. And the, and Chief Sylvia is on the committee as well, because obviously the public safety building is currently there. Um, and Jason, um, from engineering, talked a lot about the water main that needs to be replaced and some of the sewer work. So there's, you know, the sewer plants there too, and they're not going away, even with a future, um, secondary, um, public safety building. That Elm Street building is still going to be there. So bringing those stakeholders in first in terms of, um, town needs and infrastructure. And then we'll start, you know, it'll take whatever road it was meant to take. But it's exciting because it's, it's really marrying cultural assets, you know, economic development assets, infrastructure, water sewer assets and all of the other, um, you know, working groups. We're all going to dovetail at some point. And I think I'm, I'm really excited about the progress, um, everybody's been making. So that's about it.
Well, that's, uh, that's goals three, two and three. Uh, a lot of active pieces moving right now. Um, and, um, we'll continue to talk regularly. I think, um, uh, on the sixth, uh, with, with the health, I know the economic fatality, there's updates on that. There's updates on affordable housing. There's a number of other key things to, to be touching based on, including.
Yep.
Of health, you know, public health and all of that. So. We are, um, if you want to pivot to my update, I.
Yep, you want to, let's pivot to your update.
Really quickly. And, and again, my thunder's been stolen on both of them. When I was just kind of rewiring to everybody, the town hall's open. Uh, if you want to physically come down, I will not share, but there is, if you go on the website, there's a little link. If you want to come to town hall, you click. There's actually an online reservation form. So you can click, pick times, say where you want to go and it'll get a mail to the, the person you want to meet with. If you just want to show up and pay a bill, that's okay too, a little bit. But it would be best if at all possible to make an appointment, um, to make sure there's time, because we're trying to limit the number of people in the building at any given time. So, um, if you can make an appointment, that would be great. If you can't, because you just kind of pay a bill and just pick something up. You just kind of have to check in and make sure that we can do, uh, and we can serve you. And we're only, you know, we're, we're open to nights again. Um, we're only, there's no walk ups on Tuesday nights. So if you really want to come in on a Tuesday night for something, you need to make an appointment. That's four thirty to seven. So, um, and please call ahead or use the form. And, you know, you're welcome to come in, whether you want to meet with me or the clerk or somebody to consult on something. We are open again on Tuesday nights. Uh, and the other is, uh, what Peter mentioned earlier, the open space recreation plan is officially one state approval. So it's very exciting. That's the latest in a string of, of great work the community has done collaboratively. So, uh, it's very exciting. It's a very exciting step. And we have an active plan for the next six years. Uh, I know that Peter and his team are very excited to effect their first projects, which is new trail signs, the Wright Park, are going to be going up, I think, this weekend. So, um, that's one of the first concrete things. So I know they're very excited. We're making sure that they have tree appropriate mounts, so, uh, we don't get in trouble. So I, I think they're working on that. But the signs have come in, uh, which is exciting. And I know that they're going to try to work on putting some up this weekend. So.
Just on, I have a bunch of things, but they, some of them do relate to, like the good news with the open space and rec plan and the grants, um, awards that we discussed last week. You know, can we, can we sort of be proactive about getting press releases out? Or, 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 you know, I know we've retained a public relations firm, and I don't know if they're just sort of a crisis management firm. But, you know, it, it's.